All right, everybody. I think it's about time to get started. So this is the public hearing for DDS' five-year plan for the year 2022 to 2027. My name is Joe Carvalho. I am the executive secretary to Commissioner Jordan Chef. I just would like to start off the meeting with some just quick housekeeping notes and the run of show, if you will. So for those of you who have signed up to testify today, testimony will be given in the order in which we received the sign-ups. We will call off the list of names in order. If you're not present when called upon, we will circle back to you before opening the floor to the rest of the public who would like to testify but maybe have not signed up yet. If you have not signed up yet but would like to testify today, please put your name in the chat. You can access the chat if you wiggle your mouse. You should see a little chat bubble at the top of your screen. I will type something here. You just put your name in the chat like I am doing now. You should see it momentarily. That's how you reserve your place in line if you have not signed up yet. If you have signed up, no further actions needed. If you've called in by phone and would like to testify, we will check in periodically to ensure that you have an opportunity to testify. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you may do so by emailing me. I will put my email into the chat box once I'm done giving these instructions. Until you are ready to testify, please turn off your microphone. This meeting, for your awareness, this meeting is being recorded, and the recordings and the transcript will both be posted online. This meeting has live captions. If you would like to access the live captions, all you have to do, at the top of your screen or perhaps on the side of the screen, you'll see a little dot-dot-dot. If you click on that and you click on "turn on live captions," you should be able to see captions for this entire presentation. When it comes time for you to speak, please unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and mention your town and your affiliation with DDS, whether you're an individual, self-advocate, family member, staff, or provider. Please indicate whether you support, oppose, or have suggestions to improve DDS' five-year plan. Please keep your remarks to about three minutes so that we have time to hear everyone's testimony. When you finish, the commissioner and/or members of his staff may ask you clarifying questions, and when you are finished, you will be placed back on mute. If you have any questions or would like to submit written testimony, again, I will put my email in the chat. And that said, I think that concludes, you know, the beginning portion of this, and I'd like to hand it off to the commissioner just for some brief remarks.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for doing the housekeeping, and thank you to all those in attendance today. Very proud of the effort that you have seen posted in terms of the development of a five-year plan. I was fortunate enough to be with DDS for the last five-year plan, which looks a bit different. And as we know, plans are often as good as the day you make them because the circumstances you're dealt don't always align with your plan. To that end, we entered into the last five-year plan with some pretty big goals in terms of restructuring some of the way we do work and some of the way we benefit people with intellectual and developmental disability. And while reaching our stride in that effort, we're confronted with the worst pandemic we've seen, certainly in my lifetime and probably in... You put me on a brief hole. I came to Central Office specifically to avoid that, and look what happened. We were interrupted by the pandemic and some of those efforts, but we took the opportunity during one of the COVID wave lulls this summer and fall to reach out to stakeholders across the state and to get a lot of input that we gathered partly in light of what we've learned from living through a pandemic and partly what we know about our approach perhaps five years ago. And we've done our best to fold that into the five-year plan that we expect to hear comment from you today. And so with that, this is an opportunity for you to speak to us. I'm going to place myself back on mute and let Joe call the role for guests to provide testimony today. Thank you for joining us, and I look forward to your comments.
So the last I checked, I knew that we were still waiting on a few folks. That said, we should still go forward for the folks who are here. If you aren't here when your name is called, again, we will go back to you, okay? So first up, we have Donna Cohen. Donna, if you are present, please unmute yourself. And if you happen to have called in to unmute yourself, you just have to press star six. Give it another moment, Donna Cohen. Okay, we'll circle back to Donna. Second person we have listed is Elise Pearson. Is Elise Pearson available? Again, we will go back to that name later. Is Chris McNaboe present? Okay. We have three names left, and I'll read those off, but if you would like to testify, please put your name in the chat, and we'll make sure that we get to you. Lynn Arazini. And the last name, I just received an email from informing that they will not be able to attend today. So they did send a notification saying they won't be in. So that said, until we have some folks that have joined us who have preregistered to testify, some of whom who have submitted written testimony, we will open the floor for folks who would like to testify. But if you would like to testify, please put your name in the chat, and you will be called upon in the order in which we receive your names.
Joe, I see Lynn Arazini has shown up.
Oh, wonderful.
Also, I saw one of the Dwyer's names on the signup list, and I note that Hugo is here, and I'm not sure if perhaps signed up under another name, but just as FYI.
Sure, sure. That said, I think Lynn is earlier on the list, so it's Lynn. If you'd like to testify, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
All right, let's see. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, absolutely.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify. I sent in written testimony, and I'll just read part of it right now. So, "My name is Lynn Arazini. I'm the mother of Carl Arazini, a 31-year-old with autism. Due to the support of DDS, DSS, Chapel Haven, Marrakesh Family Care, Carl is able to live in his own apartment, engage in recreational activities, volunteer in work. He has a wonderful job at East Street Arts where he canes chairs and creates artwork. He plays cello and sings at his church, and he has done line dancing and swimming, all kinds of wonderful things. However, the pandemic really blew his old routine out of the water, and Carl has increased anxiety and behavioral issues. A lot of the gains that he made before the pandemic have been lost, and we're trying to get them back." And so my recommendation for the five-year plan is to make allowances for changes in individuals' needs because they change over time, especially when a pandemic hits. Carl, you know, needs a behavioralist now. Luckily, DDS is supporting that. The paperwork was very complicated, and it took from August till now to get the behavioralist on board. So I would like to streamline some processes. I noticed when I read the report, you talked about cutting down the silos, and I agree with that wholeheartedly because I know that, you know, the supports that Carl's gotten from DDS have been life-changing, but at this point now, he needs more supervision. He might need to be more in an apartment with 24 supervision due to his self-injury as active, you know, things that he's engaging in. And as far as work goes, I think that DDS also needs to be flexible with that. And although I agree that having minimum wage work is really optimal for all people, sometimes people need more support, and maybe that's hard to get when you have a minimum wage. So again, I'm urging flexibility for all the different kinds of disabilities that are out there and for all the changes that occur within a disabled person's life over time. So that's... And also, the other thing is the labor shortage. We all know about that. You mentioned that. You've been listening to that, as you said, Commissioner Chef, from a lot of people. And again, if we can make these jobs somehow to be careers rather than low-paying jobs without benefits, if we can use the Build Back Better Act funds to... They're a better career, whether it's DDS or DDS, I think really a good use of those funds. And lastly, we all know another problem is transportation. It keeps people from getting jobs and living in places where they might find opportunities to live. So many of the things in the plan are wonderful, and these are my recommendations. Just keep the flexibility and ever-changing and make it less complicated to get the funds and to get the services that are needed by our individuals.
Thank you, Lynn. I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you for having me.
Good to hear from you.
Good to see you and hear you, too.
So I'm going to give another pass through the list of the folks who have registered. There's only a few names, so again, if you've joined today and you would like to testify while we're in this virtual call, all we ask that you do is either put your name in the chat to reserve your place in queue. So I will go down through the list very quickly. It is, up first would be Donna Cohen. After that, Elise Pearson. Is Elise available? Is Chris McNaboe available to testify? Is Edward Young available to testify? Edward Young. And lastly, Pat Tyler. Is Pat Tyler present to testify? Okay, seeing none, I would like to just give one additional opportunity for anybody who has joined today who would like to testify on DDS' five-year plan, if you would like to. And oh, I see a hand raised. We will take a look to see who has raised their hand, and I see that is Hugo Dwyer. Hugo, you may unmute yourself, and I will mark you down as having wanting to testify.
Thank you. This isn't so much testimony as just checking in. I'd like to thank Commissioner Chef and everyone involved for the work you've done. I know this has been a nightmare the last couple of years, and when you came into this position, there was first that inspector general report about the lack of reporting of abuse and neglect in community settings. You've had a lot on your plate. I think you've done a good job. I'm sure people can find fault here and there. They always will, but things could have been a lot worse under COVID, and I just would like to thank you. My brother spent 40 years at Southbury Training School. I believe he received great care there. He passed away a little over a year ago, and when he did pass, I've got to say, the staff was beautiful. The staff was wonderful. The care he received was better than my family had ever hoped for him, and I would just like to thank those people, especially Eugene Harvey, for overseeing the entire thing. I do have a couple of questions about the plan. First one is a correction. You have listed as there are 144 people in ICS in Connecticut. It's actually 144 in Southbury Training School. You didn't list the number of people in the regional centers. I hope you'll amend that when you release this. I find that, as in society in general, there's emphasis placed on everybody can do this, everybody can have a job, everybody can do so-and-so. There's very little mention of the fact that there are always outliers. There are people who will not be able to do the work. They will not be able to get competitive employment and so on. I know Connecticut has currently, I think, about 1,006 14C waivers. There are a number of them pending. The pendings tend not to be moving very quickly these days. And I know that the national movement is to get people out of 14C and into competitive employment, and that there's a lot of effort, a lot of programs being created for that. I would like to see programs being created for those who lose their 14C certificates and cannot find competitive employment, to find programs that really meet the needs of those people, keep them developing their skills so they don't take a step back, keep them moving forward. If it doesn't involve pay, that's okay. What's most important is the activity, the sense of community, the sense of belonging, the chance to work in a supervised environment, and to be the best they can and live the best lives they can. And I hope you can do this. I have a lot of other questions. I don't want to spend too much time. I don't know if you want to address any of the things I brought up, but thank you for holding these forums, and I will probably be submitting written testimony tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugo, and I look forward to the written testimony and give my best
So I see that Pat Tyler, somebody who had registered to testify, has just joined us. Thank you for joining us, Pat. If you would like to testify, you may do so.
Oh, okay. Can you see me now? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, I did submit a written testimony, so I just wanted to put a name and a face to the sentiment behind my written testimony, so I can be rather brief, which may be appreciated. My position that I just want to represent is how important I think it is that we do better at getting family input before policies and programs and plans are put out in place. In the work that I did when I was doing my master's thesis on individuals with disabilities and best practices, one of the papers that I wrote about had to do with public policies being created and resulting in unintended consequences. And these unintended consequences oftentimes are a result of not being the person who's receiving the end product. And I think if we could develop a process where, not just as an advisory nature, but where families actually get a vote and a real equal seat as a stakeholder as opposed to just a consumer recipient, I think we could do better at creating better programs and better products because you would have the people on the ground at the time of creation giving input that could very much shape the way that these policies and programs are designed. So I just really want to echo in on that point. It's in my testimony. I know families are... You hear this universally from families that, you know, they appreciate what DDS does, they appreciate the services, and yet there's also a sense of kind of being powerless in the way things come out and the way things are rolled out. So I, myself, and I think the families that I've been talking to through the Family Focus Action Group that's been meeting, all feel that that statement, "Nothing about us without us," summarizes where families and individuals are coming from, that it's important that it not be the afterthought, but it become integrated into the very threads of the planning process itself. So with that, I can dismiss myself.
Thank you, Pat. Good to see you. Hope things are well.
Thank you.
So again, I would like to just make everyone aware that they are more than welcome to testify if they wish. I will go through the list of registrants again in case we are joined, and I might not have seen anybody on the attendance list. But that said, if you would like to testify today, please either put your name in the chat or raise your hand in the Teams meeting, of course. The first name that we have on our preregistered list is Donna Cohen. Donna, if you are out there, please feel free to unmute yourself. Next is Elise Pearson. Thank you. I appreciate that. Chris McNaboe, if you are out there and would like to present your testimony, you may do so. Chris McNaboe. And then one last name to read, and then we'll give it one minute or so for anyone else who's attended and would like to give their testimony. You may do so, but I would like to just double-check one last time for Edward Young. If Edward Young is present and would like to testify, you may do so now. All right, seeing that none of the folks who are remaining on the preregistered list have attended, we will now go to John Hershaw. John, feel free to unmute yourself if you'd like to testify. I see that you had raised your hand.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, John.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Chef for putting out the five-year plan. I really appreciated reading it. And I know that all of you have so many unique concerns and considerations with COVID and everything, so I appreciate the difficult job you guys have had. I've been a volunteer at Southbury Training School, as I mentioned in my written testimony, for close to five years. I have interacted with many of the state's most profoundly disabled individuals, and they've been... Their presence in my life has been a great joy and the sort of thing that I can't really adequately express in words. And all I wanted to say, and I don't really have a pro or anti position to take here on the five-year plan as it's been written, but just to emphasize, as I submitted in my written testimony, that I think Southbury remains an important option for the people who receive services there. I've seen firsthand, you know, the profundity of the disability that some of our individuals deal with and the level of care that they require, and I think the dedication of the staff is the sort of thing that many of our individuals can't get up here to tell you about, but it's the sort of thing where if you spend a lot of time on campus with the individuals and their loved ones and the staff, it becomes clear that it's a home for the individuals who live there, and I just wanted to add that for whatever it's worth. So thank you, Commissioner Chef, and I've got my best. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. That said, I'd like to give everyone one last opportunity to either raise your hand or put your name in the chat if you'd like to testify today. While we wait that additional minute, I would just like to remind everybody that tomorrow evening from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, there will be another virtual public hearing. You can find that information on our website. You can still preregister to testify there. If you are not ready to testify today, you can testify then. You may also submit written testimony and send it to my email address. That's joseph.carvallo@cp.gov. That email address is in the chat as well as on our website on the DDS Five-Year Plan website. Seeing that there are no additional raised hands, there are no additional people who had preregistered to testify, and seemingly that there is no additional testimony ready for today, I defer to the commissioner, of course, and our legislative director, Kevin Bronson, but without objection, I think we can close out today's public hearing and, you know, be ready to reconvene tomorrow.
Kevin, is there anything I need to know?
Nope. Joe said perfectly, yeah, if anyone has any additions or wants to, you know, change or adjust their testimony, feel free to email to Joe.
Thank you. Then I'll just say for our guests who testified and for the staff who are on the call and others just listening in, we value your feedback. We valued your feedback leading up to the development of the plan. We value it as it is presented today, and we will do our best to addendum in or incorporate what we see fit to modify some of what you've already reviewed or to add to some of what you've already reviewed in one form or another. And I thank you very much for joining today.
I see that Lynn has a hand raised, and Lynn? Perhaps that was accidental.
Oh, I just wondered that after you have these meetings, these testimony meetings, if there'll ever be a chance for any of us to work further on the five-year plan because I'm very interested in, as Pat was saying, the input. I would be the person who would really want to be giving input.
Thank you, Lynn. So what we have done typically is, when I say typically, this will be the second, the third five-year plan I'm familiar with since I've come to Connecticut, that we will, based on the feedback and review and circumstances of the day, there are certain things within the plan that make sense we could start on now. There are others that, in the light of the pandemic, would be ill-advised in the moment, but that we plan to take a look and prioritize certain areas, take a look at some of the additional funding that may be coming in federally that will allow us to forge ahead and require us on a timeline to do those things. And with each of those things, we will be looking to staff them up and include stakeholder input as we roll them out. There is an intended vagueness in the plan, so as not to be too prescriptive, which allows for it to be flexible, which I think is one of the most common themes we have heard. We heard earlier today in your testimony, Lynn, but we heard throughout the feedback sessions this summer and fall, a need for DDS to be flexible. So there'll be an opportunity for us to socialize many of the aspects of the plan in the broader community and to get continued input, and we'll need help. We'll need help to carry out all the things we have outlined within the plan over a five-year period. So yes, there'll be further opportunity for participation. There'll be more feedback sessions within the regions and the Central Office.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for having us today.
Of course.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time today. Again, if you'd like to testify tomorrow, there is a...
Of course.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time today. Again, if you'd like to testify tomorrow, there is a virtual public hearing tomorrow. You can find that information on our website at DDS.ct.gov. If you would like to submit written testimony, please send it to joseph.carvallo@ct.gov. Again, that information is in the chat and on the website. And if you'll be joining us tomorrow, we'll see you then. And I'm sure otherwise, we will see you around. So thank you again. Take care, everyone.